I don't know, do we have to formally close the public hearing with a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Stephen.
Do I have a second?
Second by Mary Ann. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, item number six. Consider adoption of ordinance number fifteen dash twelve dash twenty-two drafted in response to petition number CRZ two oh one five zero zero two. A conditional district rezoning request from Mark Belissimo with the Lodge on Lake Lure. This request involves the following properties. Tax pin one six five zero seven zero six located at three sixty-one Charlotte Drive. Rezone the entire parcel from R one residential to R three C D resort residential conditional district. I'll open up the floor to discussion on this matter.
Or a motion.
Well, or a motion.
Motion before you discuss.
Okay, I'll open up for a motion. Steve?
For, for what? To consider the adopt, uh, the ordinance? Or to discuss it?
First make the motion and then after we make the motion, we can do our discussion.
But what's the motion we're making? To adopt the ordinance?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, but before that, there's some changes I want to make to the ordinance itself.
Okay.
So do we need to do that first, Chris, or, I mean, there's a couple of things there.
Could your motion state the...
Changes in it, I guess, as you propose.
Recommended.
Or somebody else could make a motion and then you make a motion to amend that motion and with his approval.
Plus, we can, after the discussion, we can amend the motion. That's what we've done in the past, so.
Okay.
Why don't you go ahead and make the motion and then, and give us your ideas of what you would amend.
Well, it's, it's a lengthy motion.
Uh, so. Bear with us.
Yeah. With regard to the petition of Mr. Mark Belissimo, Lake Lure Lodge LLC, to amend the zoning map of the town of Lake Lure and create the Lodge on Lake Lure R three C D conditional district on property situation situated at three sixty-one Charlotte Drive and currently zoned R one, I move the board to make the following findings. On balance, the proposed amendment is consistent with the two thousand seven, two thousand twenty-seven comprehensive plan for the following reasons. Policy LU dash one dash one point one of the comprehensive plan reads, "Create zoning districts or modify existing zoning districts to accommodate uses as indicated in the comprehensive plan." The land which is the subject of this petition to create an R three C D resort residential conditional district is classified as resort residential on the future land use map, figure eight, contained in chapter eleven of the comprehensive plan. Resort residential equates to R three per table eleven point three comprehensive plan. The proposed use, uses align with other specific sections of the comprehensive plan cited in the applicant's project narrative and referenced in the zoning and planning board meeting regarding economic development, utility infrastructure, and community services and facilities. The zoning and planning board also finds the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommends approval. Number two, the proposed amendment to the zoning map is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The uses proposed for this development are hotel, motel, lodge with supporting facilities. The property has been put in the same, to the same use for many years and has coexisted in harmony with the surrounding residential properties. The proposed redevelopment has been designed to maintain the historic character of the lodge, which has long been an asset to the neighborhood and the community. The conceptual plans are generally consistent with the visual manual entitled Town of Lake Lure Design Guidelines for New Commercial Construction. The project will have a positive impact on the local economy by broadening the range of visitors frequenting Lake Lure, creating jobs, and building the commercial tax base. The project will enhance infrastructure by providing a new public eight-inch water distribution line while increasing water and sewer revenues to the town. The applicant will make improvements to Charlotte Drive, a town street, based on a preliminary traffic impact analysis and is outlined in the list of standards and conditions. The applicant has acquired additional property to be dedicated to off-site parking to alleviate traffic impacts on Charlotte Drive and will manage deliveries so that impacts are minimal. The applicant has committed to using down lighting, which will ensure that light will not leave the property. In addition, the applicant agreed to submit at the time of permitting for construction a lighting plan that demonstrates compliance with current commercial lighting standards in the zoning regulations. The town's noise regulations currently in place are sufficient ensuring, in ensuring noise will not become an issue with this redevelopment project. The Lake Advisory Board has deliberated and offered recommendations regarding lake structures and uses to the town council and marine commission. The applicant will plant mature trees to break up parking areas as well as maintain a vegetative buffer to screen the off-site parking area from the surrounding properties. I further move the town council enact ordinance fifteen dash twelve dash two-two together with list of standards and conditions and the general development plan referenced therein, thereby creating the Lodge on Lake Lure R three conditional district.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Bob. Further discussion?
Okay. In that motion, I added and the general development plan because it wasn't there because that's exhibit A and B in, in the ordinance. So I felt that that was important in the motion. But in the ordinance itself, actually in the standards and conditions, there's a couple of things under, under parking A two where it says off-site parking shall be allowed at distances greater than the four hundred feet. I think at the beginning of that, we need to add as an accessory use. Because that's what it is, it's an accessory use to the, to the function. And I think we need to do that again with A three. At the very beginning of that statement, and the general development adds as an accessory use.
With those, you okay with that, Bob?
Yeah.
Mary Ann?
And...
John, yeah, okay with those additions?
Uh, and then under building height, Mike sent us email the other day drafting this and I recommended a change, he put it in, and then Mary Ann had some comments on it and, and then this iteration comes back around and that information that he put in based on my email is no longer there. So, and what it was, at the end of building height, it says the applicant will attempt to comply with these varied height standards. However, in recognition that site conditions may require it, and I recommended adding, "And only if site conditions do require it, each of these replacement standards may be increased up to an additional four feet." And so I, I know you had some discussion on that, Mary Ann, and, and so I didn't know where we stand on that. Do we need to add the statement I recommended, or are we gonna leave it out, or what?
As I recall, I commented to the email that I got, I, I didn't feel like, and if only, uh, added anything to it, it was stating, and I'm not sure what it was stating, so Mike can clarify that.
Yeah.
Are we, are we stating that we recognize that this is going to be in, um, excess of the height limit? Or are we giving an additional four feet in addition to what we have already seen in the plan?
Yeah, I think what this does is, i- if site conditions necessitated, we're allowed to go another four feet above what's already being authorized in this adjusted standard.
I see big eyes behind you. I was, I was at the site yesterday and I understand, uh, I, I don't know that everybody understands, but on a steep slope, when you're putting construction, what is maybe two stories on one side, maybe four stories on the back, I can think of One Friend's Home on the lake front, it's actually four stories, um, and plus the roof and so forth. But when you average the height on the, on the low side and on the high side, then we get the, the regulation. So, um, I, I think that, I, I'll just ask the question of engineers and architects, do you feel we need to give an additional, or can you work within the plan that was presented?
Uh, just to say one thing further, Commissioner, is, uh, this originally was, those numbers were four feet higher, so it's been pared back four feet with the insertion of that caveat that if site conditions require it, it may be increased, right? Is that correct?
Uh, I don't recall it that way. Uh, I thought, if I recall from the meeting, it was, I mean, first of all, the general development plan is conceptual and, and we recognize that. And, and detailed construction draw, drawings follow. But in the conceptual aspect of it, and, and that was the discussion with Frank that day, was, you know, they're not real sure in the conceptual aspect of how hard and fast they can hold to the rule of the specified height. And, and we discussed and talked about a potential four-foot buffer. And, and we came up with what we had, and that's currently in the standards and conditions, and Mary Ann, that's there. So I don't think it was four feet taken away from the original, I thi- I think the original is still there in what you have in, in wording, uh, which is thirty-eight feet, thirty-nine feet, uh, and thirty-six feet. And, and we were going to allow a four-foot maximum buffer if the site conditions necessitated it during the actual development, uh, based on, you know, when they go to detailed drawings.
The intent, the intent was to stay with what is there, it's only if necessary would they be used, use that buffer.
Right.
The way I remember it.
And that, that was my intent by saying, only if the site conditions actually do require it, do they get this four-foot buffer. That was my intent.
And that's what I, that's what I understood.
Well, in, uh, in fact, it, it was, they were all four feet higher, the last list of standards and conditions. And it was your request, Commissioner, whether we take away those four feet.
Right, but it, it was in those standards and conditions, but that was not the original plan.
No. Well, anyway.
I, I got, I got what you're saying.
That's what I was saying.
What, what ended up in the standards and conditions added that four-foot buffer already, and, and that really wasn't our intent. So you, you've got it back down to basically where we were talking and, and I just don't want it to where it could be assumed that you have that four-foot buffer automatically. It's only if the site conditions require it. Now, how do we determine that? See, and, and that would be the issue. The plans come in, the detailed plans come into where, the zoning and planning board, Sheila? Or, or, or to you?
The plans have come into step, but then if, if the ordinance is adopted as presented in the list of standards and conditions, it does say that the zoning and planning, or in the or, or in your motion one, that the zoning and planning board has to review compliance.
Well, I'm, I'm...
We could have a big discussion if that's...
Well, I'm comfortable with giving them the flexibility if the, if the, if the site conditions require. But I want it understood, it's not automatic you get that extra four feet. I'm not, I'm not concerned with developing a staff vending, vetting process for that extra four feet if it's determined to be needed. They bring the plan in, look, we have to do this, we have to go to forty-two, or, or forty feet on the treehouse instead of thirty-eight because of this and that that we couldn't foresee in the conceptual phase. So I'm, I'm not opposed to that flexibility.
I'm okay with it.
So where do we go with that, Mike?
Well, I mean, whatever the commission wants, the, the council wants to do, it, uh, I think the language says that already.
Okay.
If you want to add that caveat, then we can, we can write it down, if the applicant's agreeable to it, so.
It pretty well states that now, though, doesn't it, Mike? I mean, from what I can...
Yeah, it just doesn't say that only if they, if the site conditions do require it. I don't know how important that is, though.
I, I wasn't arguing or...
Yeah, no, I understand.
Questioning, I was more questioning, were those words even necessary? Because as, as you said, it's sort of redundant.
Yeah. Okay. Then I'm fine without those words, you know, if that's the general consensus. So those were the only recommended changes I had to the, uh, standards and conditions. The, the ordinance itself, uh, there's no recommended changes in wording in anywhere.
With those changes, are there any other thoughts by council? Yeah.
Yeah, I have a suggested change to the list of standards and conditions that was brought to my attention by the applicant. If you look at paragraph five B, or look at paragraph five A first, you'll notice with the waterline extension, we added the introductory clause, unless the project is abandoned, the applicant will fund construction of the waterline. And the applicant would like to add that same introductory clause to the next one on Charlotte Drive.
Okay.
Unless the project is abandoned, the applicant will fund it for traffic impact analysis. That seems reasonable.
That makes sense.
I do, I agree.
So with those changes, any further discussion?
I guess as far as, uh, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Okay. Going, going through this, I first want to thank all our staff, guys, I know you've gone through it. Whether our town realizes it or not, you've got the best staff in the country. They are thorough, they're knowledgeable, and they deal in fact, not fiction, and the facts wherever is in the zoning book is what they enforce with or without prejudice. So I really want to thank them for all the hard work, this has not been easy on them. And I want to thank you, the public. I know both sides are out here in the audience, and I appreciate the comments on both sides, and I've learned and, and listened to both sides. When zoning came around to the lodge, being built there in the late thirties, early, early forties, in nineteen seventy-eights when zoning was roughly established, at that time, that was operational as a commercial area. However, it just got overlooked or wasn't addressed, or they were in the, in the early stages of zoning, so they went ahead and just zoned it R one. All right, we came back in two thousand seven, we had a full review in establishing the two thousand seven comprehensive plan. Prior to them adopting it, and this is a different mayor, different council, different group of people, before that, they stopped and said, wait a minute, we have some areas in our community that need to be looked at as resort residential. Okay, R three. This is one of seventeen or eighteen properties that was recognized at that time that should have been listed as R three. Had it been R three, this process would be different and you'd be going to the board of adjustments versus coming to council. Three of us here have served on that board. So looking at this for so, and to, and the, when it was adopted, all but one of those properties was zoned R three. That, they put the hiatus on the applicants, the property owners, to come and get that process approved. For some reason, all other properties seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, I won't be that exact, but sixty or seventeen of these properties were all, at council's recommendation, changed to R three when the applicants would come fill out the paperwork. The owner never filled out the paperwork to make this R three. This was one of those properties that a whole different group of people made that decision on. A comment was made tonight that the end was there first and residents built around it, and I agree with that. When you buy a property, I, I actually owned over Gardner Drive, I was aware it was a commercial operation back in those days, so we have to be, one, responsible and also sometimes we have to work with our neighbors, be tolerant. And I love the sounds of people having a good time, I've listened to the camp and the singing of all the kids having a great time, and this is another one of those I hope in future generations will look back and say, we've made the right choice. A couple more things I want to bore you, but as council, it's also our responsibility to not only consider the ones around the project area, but it's also our responsibility to look out for the entire community in this decision. And I can tell you, nobody here is taking this lightly, the applicant hasn't taken it lightly, the staff hasn't, and we've all done our parts to, to work hard to represent all of you. We've had two boards that we entrust to make decisions. Both of these boards, I believe one of them had two, two public meetings on, the other one, three, staff would know exact numbers if you ever want to know. Both of these boards came to us and said, look, this is a project that meets a criteria, it's healthy for our community, and, and all of our community will benefit from this choice. Our Chamber of Commerce, bless their hearts, they work their tails off trying to bring business into our community. And as you see, subways come in and fail, you see small businesses come in and fail. They have less than a six-months window, and I've sat there in restaurants during the winter time, the one that is open, and they're now open part-time. And talked to a waiter, a waitress in there, and they've made less than twenty dollars in a day. They give your life up for twenty dollars in a day because there is no economic growth. So this to me is, is the spur of that. I have a lifetime of experience, I've got fifty years in construction, and what I see before this council is a very qualified applicant, I see very qualified architect, utilities engineers, and traffic engineers. As been stated earlier, this is a concept, now the, the work starts, and worked on projects myself such as Grove Park Inn and all of those, this is a concept and the work, they're gonna be working with staff for, for quite a while with our architects, and it's gonna be give and take, get back, and get it within, in their areas. So I've got perfect confidence in that group. The applicant started this process April thirtieth of this year. We also have a responsibility that they're entitled to as an applicant, a timely response. We've held extra meetings, extra time, extra council meetings, to make sure that our, our community is informed. We've put it on the website, we've updated the website. So we've, we feel we've done everything we can to be transparent in our decisions, and therefore, uh, we've, we feel we've done all we can to get that message out there to you. Is this in harmony with the comprehensive plan? Yes. Is this in harmony with our land use? Yes. Does this inspire commerce for our community? Yes. Does this project create a net value for our whole community? And I say yes. Is this good for our, for the heart, entire community? There's no doubt that there'll be jobs, there'll be additional people, there'll be additional interest. Uh, you know, I heard opinion about values on land and those percentages there. Well, I've been in construction all my life, and I can tell you one thing, if you're building next door, if somebody's interested in the house next door, the property next door, because they see an investment in the future. If you've letting that land die, go down here and, and see the properties you can buy for wholesale prices right now. Only one direction we've got, and that's to keep going up. So with, with this, uh, I'm ready to vote, and my, I'll be honest with you right now, my vote is yes, and I support this project totally.
Okay. John, you want to go?
Yeah. Six years on town council, this is absolutely the toughest decision, I think, that's come across our desk, it's the toughest one I've seen. Both sides have very valid points. And with due respect to what, uh, my good friend Bob Cameron just said, I believe that our comp plan can be interpreted either to support this or to deny. I think it can be read either way, and I don't, then from what I understand, that's not unusual with comprehensive plans, that, that happens. One thing that's, that's occurred today and this evening is that we've received new information from, uh, Mr. Eisenbrow that we have not had an opportunity to thoroughly digest or to analyze, and I think that we need an opportunity to do that. I think that a town attorney agrees with that, is what I was told earlier. I've had, uh, conversations with Mr. Belissimo and Mr. uh, Mr. Eisenbrow, I tell you, in my, in my opinion, they're both straight-up guys, they want to do what's right, they want to come to a reasonable solution, and I think that reasonable people can come to a reasonable, uh, compromise. I think we're very fortunate to have a developer of the caliber of Mr. Belissimo looking at this. The, our common, we have much more, I think everybody in this room has much more in common with what they want in this than they have differences. Most everybody wants to see the lodge improved, wants to see rooms added if that's, uh, in the plan, if the, the existing restaurant expanded. Where the rub comes is with the second restaurant. I think that it's, um, and, and as the applicant has said, that that is something they're looking at doing, um, in a subsequent phase, not in the first phase, I can't remember if it was a year, two years, but at some point after the first phase is what we were, uh, I think, am I wrong, is that what we were told?
We didn't make any commitment to any phase, and you said it might be in phases.
Yeah.
We didn't state it.
But at, at any rate, I think that, uh, a- a- and I know that you, you all have told me that you don't want to do the work in the summertime because it interferes with the neighborhood and it interferes frankly with, with your operation, which makes, makes perfect sense. But we have, you have an opportunity to really show the town what it, what you can do and what the, uh, uh, project's gonna look like, and it's everything that we believe that it would be, I think that, uh, holding off on the restaurant, approving the restaurant, the second restaurant part till, to a later date after it's been demonstrated there of what the first part of the project is gonna look like, is, is a reasonable thing. We've, um, I, my suggestion is that, um, we not make a decision tonight, that we give Mr. Belissimo, Mr. Eisenbrow a chance to work out a compromise here. If this thing goes to litigation, the town has got to defend it. That's, uh, that's gonna cost the town a lot of money, money we could spend on a new police car, we could spend on dredging, we've been down this road before, and it's not good for anybody. In my opinion, with the only people that win in those situations are the lawyers. And, uh, we don't need that, it causes increased division in the community. One thing that, uh, I promised people when I ran for office in, six years ago, was that looking back on the history of Lake Lure, we had had a ton of litigation, and that I would do everything I could to keep us out of litigation. And I think we've been very successful with that right now, and for the past couple of years, we haven't had, we haven't had any, anything that we had to defend in court. Give me just a minute here while I look, as I may, was making notes as people were commenting. Hopefully the, we, we can, we can avert that legal action, but I think if we pass this tonight, that it's probably certain. And I'm not sure from what I heard tonight, exactly what the town's liabilities might be. It could delay the development, we don't want that. Most people I've heard from, like I say, support, support the improvements, I've heard some people comment, well, it's just the people who are from out of town who don't support this. Well, that, that's, that's not the case in the neighborhood. I, uh, own property in that neighborhood and live full-time in that neighborhood for a number of years and know the folks over there quite well, and I could sit here and call out their names, there are about five or six of them that live right around there full-time, and of the ones who live there full-time, they have, uh, concerns about the traffic in the second restaurant. But every one of them, without exception, is for the development of the end proper. And for the conference center, the treehouse, the, all, all of the other things. It's my recommendation that we postpone the decision on this for up to thirty days, give the parties a chance to get together and work this out, and, uh, like I said, I think the town attorney agrees with that a sentence, but is that, am I correct on that, Chris Callahan?
Well, we did receive a twenty-one-page letter from the attorney Craig Justice late this afternoon, or at least it was late when I received it. I was in court all day in McDowell County and had no opportunity to review that. I did suggest that the next town meeting is, I think, three weeks from now. I did suggest that the next town meeting is, I think, three weeks from now. You might want to, uh, one, uh, postpone this decision till that day. And in the meantime, give an opportunity to our consultant, Tom Terrill, uh, who, uh, a chance to review that letter and comment on it to us. And, uh, perhaps make any suggested, uh, ideas of amendments or changes for consideration that might, uh, uh, be both palatable to the, everybody. Uh, and, and give us some more insight into what, what we're doing on this, so.
Let, let me add this, I, I could vote for this tonight wi- without the, uh, restaurant by the lake. And, uh, uh, but short of that, if that's not agreeable, and you're shaking your head, Mark, that it's not, then, uh, I would, uh, want to delay. But if I had to vote for it with the restaurant, I would have to vote no, and I don't want to do that because I wanna see the improvements to the lodge.
Okay. But, John, you make some very good points. And I, but the motion on the table right now is with the restaurant. And with all due respect to our attorney, um, I think that we've been deliberating this thing for months. So, uh, the, the motion is on the table, if it's defeated, then we can consider removing the restaurant and, and, um, going it to a mediation period and so forth. But at, as the motion's on the table, I'm assuming then, John, you just said no.
Well, I don't think you, oh, Mary Ann hasn't had a chance.
No, I'm just saying, but Bob said yes. No, okay. Bob said yes, you know, and Steve, would you, Mary Ann?
I, I'll be glad to make some comments. Um, I know I made some comments and statements at our last meeting. I won't get on my heartburn, but, um, the, the, the CD is a new concept to me, it sort of blew my mind. And I was having a lot of difficulty feeling that we had to approve something that was in more or less a concept stage. And then it was a blank check from there, and it's not. Um, I am aware that there is a great deal of oversight and a great deal of staff approval of, of every phase and every corner. Um, I still have concerns about the setback from, from the lake. I also heard folks, and I think it's important that people know we've heard them, who felt like, well, maybe if we don't address the lakefront restaurant and that setback and all of that, we can just approve the rest of it. But as I understand this process, what we approve is the most they can do. I don't think to, I mean, they can alwa- they could always leave off the lakefront restaurant. They could decide, we could vote for everything tonight, they could decide to leave it off next week. Um, they are gonna deal in phases, they, they said that, um, they, they don't, they have not spelled out what the stages will be. So I don't know if the lakefront restaurant will be first, last, or in the middle. Um, but if we approve it without the restaurant, I think we're in trouble. Even down the road, if everybody says, you know, they've done a great job, wish we had that restaurant. So like Sue said, we don't have to go sit at a white tablecloth. I can go in my, my boating clothes and sit down by the side of the lake and have a sandwich. I don't want a five-course meal. I told Bob the other day, if I supported all the restaurants in town, they could label me the Goodyear Blimp. But, um, I, I guess what I'm saying is if we approve their concept, they can't do more than what we approve. They can do less than what we approve. So with that in mind, and by the way, I didn't get, uh, the attorney's letter until I got a copy of it here. I do not get the email that comes to the town server for some reason. Um, we can still talk to them about setback. We can still talk to them about things during that process. So, in, in spite of my concerns, I feel comfortable in voting yes and talking about it later.
Okay, okay. Uh, Steve?
Thank you.
Uh, I, I could probably go on ten, fifteen, twenty minutes on, on, uh, why I think this should go forward. Uh, absolutely, I would vote yes, I'll tell you that upfront. Uh, I can, uh, echo all of the positives that Mr. Cameron has, uh, set forth. Uh, and, and, uh, I, I can understand, uh, the concerns of my fellow commissioner and Mr. Moore. Uh, I, I too just received the letter this afternoon. Uh, although that's not officially been made a part of the record. Uh, it's, it's, uh, stuff that's been delivered to us and we've received it. And we haven't read it, looked at it and all that stuff, uh, we haven't gotten that. Uh, I hate to see the litigation or the possibility of litigation. Um, I, I do want to, uh, well, I, I guess it's a moot point. Uh, but, uh, Mr. Justice, uh, proposed, uh, a thirty-day delay. And, and I, I guess I wanna ask Mr. Belissimo directly. Would you agree to that thirty-day delay or, or request it, uh, for possible mediation to assuage the concerns of the opposition?
I would not be interested, I, I did spend time with Mr. Eisenbrow on the phone and get a pretty good perspective on sort of his interest in what a compromise is. And I, I don't feel comfortable with that would be to anything of positive impact. I think to Mary Ann's point, you know, there's things that can happen over time. But I think that we, we're hopeful we can get support this evening.
Okay. So, so, so the other point of mine is really a moot point at, at this stage. Uh, uh, the motion I proposed, it, uh, would require a vote of up or down, I would think.
Let me, let me just clarify, you, there's a substantive motion made by you and seconded.
Right, correct.
Once a substantive motion has been made, another substantive motion can't be introduced, but a procedural motion can. Mr. Moore made a suggestion of a possible procedural motion to continue, but it wasn't actually a formal motion, and that too would need a second, it wasn't seconded. So unless there is a motion, a procedural motion under Rule eighteen, Motion nine, to defer.
Correct.
Then there is no motion to, to defer. So then the substantive motion yes can be voted on.
So I guess, John, did you wanna make that motion or what?
Well, I, I think it's, uh, probably a foregone conclusion that it won't get a second. But I, I think that I should make it, yes, I'll make the motion that we, that we defer.
Motion made, made, a procedural motion made by John to defer, do I hear a second? Hearing none, uh, we'll move to the, uh, voting on the, in fact, I think we voted already.
Well. I vote yes.
Okay, vote yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
John says no, and therefore I don't have to break a tie. I had all this, because I thought I'd be having to break a tie. Uh, I, I'm gonna ask that this be introduced into the record. I, basically, it, it started off with thanking staff for all you've done, thanking the committees. And, uh, and also thanking the developer for being so flexible and, and responding to everything that we've asked for. Um, and the citizens, I mean, we, you have been responsive, you've, you've listened, you've made comments. And I think things, even though we disagree on some certain, certain things, I think it's been a very, very healthy process. And I've read every letter, I've read most of them twice. Um, I concur with everything Bob said, and I won't go into the rest of it, but to say that I, I would have voted yes as well, so.
And can I suggest him another motion, and that is the docu- the letters, the documents that, uh, Mr. Justice and people brought and, and gave to the town, that be clarified that they're not a part of the minutes of the meeting, but that they are received by the town and will be held by the town as part of the overall records of this entire project and everything else that's been submitted on this project.
I will make that motion, what he said, okay?
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Mary Ann. Um, uh, any further, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, uh, thank you. Sure.
You're not done yet.
We're not done.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, no, yeah, I'm sorry. I tend to be a little more flexible than I should be. Okay, um, okay, the decision to either move on or to take a break?
Let's pile through.
Let's pile through, okay. Item number seven, proposed ordinance number fifteen twelve, uh, twenty-two A. An ordinance amending section ninety-four dash twelve, I mean, point twelve of the Lake Structures Regulations of the Town of Lake Lure concerning commercial and multi-dwelling use lake structures. It's public hearing, I have a few people signed up, I think I have ten in all. Uh, first one is Sheridan Wade, pass, Steve Eisenbrow? Okay, uh, come on up, just, I, I, it's good exercise.
Again, thank you, and, uh, uh, thanks for all your consideration. And I genuinely mean that on the previous petition motion. And it has been a good process and, and the professionalism on everybody's part, I believe, has been right up there. So I'll just put that on the record.
Thank you, Steve.
With respect to this second petition, you know, I, again, I have concerns about changing rules that have been in place for decades around the lake structures. And, uh, it's not clear to me yet why, uh, they can't be followed still in due course for a successful project. And I, uh, so I guess I would just register that, uh, we have, I have concern, we have concern about that. And, uh, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you. Craig?
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the town council, um, in terms of this, this particular standard and change, the, what you're ask, what you're basically setting up is a process where, as Steve said, you have all these rules and regulations, they've been in place for decades. And then in one fell swoop, town council basically says, for this particular project, none of those rules apply. Now, the basis for that is you just have to find that general welfare and the best overall interest of the public is being met. So if I come in, I move into this community, if I'm, if I'm a property owner, I really don't know what the rules are until you set them on a case-by-case basis. If I'm a developer and I come in and I wanna know what the rules are, I won't know what they are because you can basically tell me no on a case-by-case basis or you can tell me yes on a case-by-case basis. And I guess my point to that is, what's the point of having rules at all? You know, law is supposed to provide certainty. You are setting up situations where you don't provide any certainty. What you do is you provide pitch battles every time somebody asks for something. Because you change the rules at a whim, just because you think overall it's in the public interest. That's a pretty tough standard to prove. That's really a political standard, which is a shame, that it has to be a political standard. And I say that with all due respect, but that's what you're setting up here. That's what you've set up with this conditional use process, and that's what you're setting up for all your lake rules. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
I could add something to this if you permit.
No problem.
Uh, actually, these rules that the town has on lake structures have not been in place for decades. Back in the nineties, when they first developed lake structures regulations, they were different than what they are now. Uh, then for a number of years, the town changed it from an ordinance to just a policy. And they went under a policy for a number of years, and there was a reason for that. As the town owned the lake, there came the idea that, um, having a policy gave the town then more flexibility in deciding what to do with the things that were put on the lake since the town had a deed and owned the lake. Uh, but after a number of years, a new town council came through in the nineties and changed it back to an ordinance again. And that ordinance has been amended several times since then. About two thousand and four, I think it was, or five or six, uh, George Shirk, Dr. Shirk, uh, did a law review article called The Law of Lake Lure. And in that law review article, which has been out there for more than ten years now, he suggested that the town consider using the word special grant in its lake structures ordinance. Because as the owner of the lake, uh, there might be a time from, certainly from a ti- uh, an occasional time, the town may, may want to consider granting a special grant. So basically, this is following up on a suggestion that is in the Law of Lake Lure by Dr. George Shirk, uh, uh, to, to have the possibility that the town from time to time could grant a special grant in certain instances as the owner of the lake.
I, I would like to just add a, a little bit more to that. In the Lake Structures Regulations, section ninety-four twelve, all, already and has for some time, um, carved out town council authority, uh, is required and approval is required for commercial lake structures. Um, and, and that section establishes a difference between commercial lake structures and all the rest, residential lake structures. But that section provides no standards or no definitions on what town council must evaluate when faced with an application for a commercial lake structure. So the Lake Advisory Board, uh, as you have in a recommendation and a memo, has been working on this for, for some time, considerably before even the, the Lodge on Lake Lure. Um, and it's the recommendation that you have before you from the Lake Advisory Board to say, since commercial lake structures have to come before the town council anyway, uh, to get any kind of approval, that we tighten up, uh, the language recognizing that the, that the, the town council, as the owner of the lake, uh, where any lake structure gets built, that the town council has the full authority in considering those applications to establish whatever conditions, rules, uh, or, or such that it sees appropriate for commercial lake structures. Um, it, it does not change the process that's in place, the standards that are in place, the staff review and approval that's in place for residential lake structures, uh, which really are the vast majority of what we would see, uh, at a particular time. It simply says, for, for the, the fairly rare occasion where you'll have a commercial lake structure application, it goes through this process, uh, which parallels now, if, if this is passed, uh, it would parallel the process that you just went through with conditional district rezoning, uh, on land.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, uh, just a, a technical point, I, I just checked the regulation. The paragraph that we're considering amending as part of this ordinance, uh, was first adopted August the fourteenth of oh-seven. So this particular paragraph's only been in existence eight years, so.
Okay. Is that clarification back to the public hearing? And now I lost the twist. I think Amy, you're next? Okay, good for Amy and Mark. Okay, David Forrester. Okay, Rita Robinson. Bill Cox. Okay, Barbara Marsh, C R C.
My name is Barbara Marsh Cersey, and I live at, uh, let me think, two of what Havner's Point Circle. Uh, I have to say that out of all the group in this rest, in this building, I have probably eaten at the Lodge on Lake Lure more than anybody. I have put people that are coming to stay, 'cause my house is small, at the Lodge on Lake Lure. And we go by boat, even if it's raining with our umbrellas. So nobody was against the Lodge on Lake Lure. We think a restaurant to go by boat, 'cause I go now, is great. Now, I'll throw my own political little input in here, I go by boat to the liquor store, too. And you're taking that away from us. So, um, I, I am not against you making that place more beautiful than it is. I mean, to me, it's awesome, we go drink wine there. We go drink wine there. We have several friends of mine's had weddings there. So we're not against the Lodge on Lake Lure. We want it to be what it should be. But if you put eight hundred and fifty-seven cars on Havner's Point Circle, we would never get out of there. And I think, I have to tell you all this, I have friends from Florida with money. And he's waiting on this to be voted in. He's already looking at some property on North Shore, on the North Shore. But I want to mention this to you guys. Janet, if she's still here, was the one that told me she wanted a liquor store moved because it was an eyesore. Now, I've never seen a prettier liquor store in North Carolina than that one. Secondly, I have to say the people that spoke tonight, basically Blaine and, Blaine Cox and his wife had told me if they had a rental house by them, they would move. Mr. Boss I mentioned last time came in my store about two months ago and said, if, we need to get rid of renters. So I guess it's okay if people do it in somebody else's neighborhood. Boss didn't want renters, Blaine didn't want renters, but we can put them over on Charlotte Drive.
Barbara, this is about lake structures.
I know, but I'm talking.
We want to hear.
But I have to tell you.
We want to hear about your past and everything.
This is what I'm talking about. I'm talking about.
Lake Structures Regulations, please.
Good things about it, right? My son called me tonight and said, let's go to the lodge. Okay, I want to tell you this. The noise, the noise from Runling Ball, Chris Franz's wife complained about quite a few years ago. I can hear the music at Runling Ball at my house. My neighbors were partying the other night till about nine thirty. It, with the leaves off, it was very loud. I do have to tell you this. For many people in this area, the citizens, this newly aggressive, politically pushy chamber has crossed over a line. Now, so I'm going to tell you that.
This is about lake structures.
Oh, I thought we were still talking about the lodge.
No.
But anyway, I have to say this.
You've been to the liquor store.
John Moore. I have to tell you this. John Moore, I appreciate everything he did. I know some of the people in the gorge got mad because he hired the attorney he did. If an attorney's won one time, maybe he'll win a second time. Thank you all, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Barbara.
Little sick humor's always good.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, the last one on the list, actually outside of their applicant, is Jim Proctor.
My name's Jim Proctor. I live at three twenty-eight Boys Camp Road. I'm a little confused about this public hearing. Is this public hearing only for the change in the Lake Structures Regulation? Or is it also a public hearing for the multiple variances the developer of the Lodge on Lake Lure wants? If it's only a public hearing for the ordinance, does that mean there's not going to be a public hearing for the multiple variances the developer of the Lodge on Lake Lure wants? In the past, the town has always had a public hearing with significant changes, when significant changes are made to the Lake Structures Regulation, every single time. And you have to admit, the changes the developer wants are huge. In our comprehensive plan, section eleven point zero, Land Use and Growth Management, it states, "Commercial lakefront development is another land use concern. The encroachment of commercial land uses along the lakefront should be accommodated under existing regulations. However, additional commercial development on the lakefront would detract from Lake Lure's beauty and potentially could decrease the environmental quality of the lake." Of those surveyed for the comprehensive plan, eighty-three point six percent cited the need to limit commercial development on the lakefront. To comply with the comprehensive plan, the developer needs to keep the charm and the character of the lodge and not a plan like the current one that detracts from the existing structures. The developer wants cluster mooring plus a boathouse. A boathouse that's too long and too wide, and more slips than cluster mooring allows. I'm not quite sure what the developer is not asking for on the lakefront. And all of this without a public hearing. I'm ashamed of our town council. Are you really going to allow this developer to control you like this? Are you really going to allow this developer to have so many things you have not let other owners have? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. One more opportunity for you to take your three minutes, okay? No? Okay, I, I'm having trouble finding the proposed one.
Well, are you done with the public hearing and are you going to?
I'm sorry, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Bob, do I hear it second?
I'll second.
Second by Stephen. Any further discussion?
Jim raised, this was the public hearing on changing the ordinance. Are we also having a public hearing on applying that new ordinance to this, this project?
I can't answer that question.
It's, no, it's, it's not required. As Jim said, any changes to lake structures regulations have traditionally always had a public hearing, which we just had. That will make a change to the, to the lake structures regulations if it's approved tonight. The, following that, number nine, is a request for a commercial lake structure. There is no requirement for a public hearing. It's not an ordinance, it's not a rezoning. It's like any other request for a commercial lake structure that goes in front of the town council for consideration and a, and a vote. Incidentally, all of our public comments and our discussions in our meetings have addressed both the lake pieces and the land pieces. We're to the point where, where I think that there's been sufficient discussion on all aspects of this. But technically, when we get down to it, we've got to do it in separate chunks because it's separate regulations that govern and provide authority for the decisions as a whole.
And, and have we not already had that hearing with the Lake Advisory Board, where they've recommended these structures be approved? And, and as part of that, they recognize the need for a text amendment to the ordinance, which they have sent to us, which is before us now? So that hearing's already been held with regard to that.
They've actually had two, like if I was had two.
There's a motion associated with this, so.
Yeah, there's.
I can't find it in this fact.
No, there's, there's not one in there. Well, okay, first of all, there's, there's three different memos, or three different versions of the memo. One is the one dated December ten, as you, as your first page in that section. And, and then on the next page, you have a second one with some red added to the very end of it. And then on that third page, under the actual proposed ordinance, it's, it's different again. The last sentence was a, a proposal of mine. And I am requesting that that last sentence be taken out. So just delete it from the proposed ordinance.
That's the one that's in the red as well as?
No, next page over. The last sentence of that proposed ordinance of the paragraph, that's underlined.
That's one, yeah.
Yeah. It starts out, "The town shall assess." Take that sentence out. That was a recommendation of mine, based on some other things.
And, and. Well, there's, is, is there, has there been a motion to adopt? I don't think there has, this ordinance. So Commissioner Webb, what you could do is make a motion to adopt this ordinance. With that amendment. Fifteen twelve twenty-two A, with that last sentence that you just read deleted.
I got it, got it. Okay, I make a motion. The ordinance number fifteen dash twelve dash two-two A. An ordinance amending section ninety-four point one-two, Commercial and Multi-Dwelling Use Lake Structures of the Lake Structure Regulations of the Town of Lake Lure be adopted with the exception, well.
Removal.
Huh?
Removal.
Well, there's two, two corrections, actually. Where it says in the center, "Now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the Town of Lake Lure, North Carolina, meeting in special session, not regular." So we need to make that amendment, and then removal of the last sentence of the actual proposed amendment, which is, "The town shall assess all commercial blah blah," and delete that sentence.
And I'll second that motion. With those corrections.
Motion made by Stephen, seconded by Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous? So. Did you vote?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said yes. I, I thought I heard. Maybe I was hearing an echo. Okay, I'm sorry, all, all opposed?
I'm confused.
This is simply the ordinance to change the Lake Structure Regulations.
I know, but we've changed it twice since we made the motion.
No, he, he had it special and he took off the last sentence.
Is there an explanation for why we took that off?
Sure, it's just not appropriate in the Lake Structure Regulations. That, that particular verbiage just isn't appropriate there. It's, it's appropriate in a different process of imposing a fee. So the audience understands what I'm talking about. I proposed a, an addition to that ordinance that said, "The town shall assess all commercial and multi-dwelling lake structure owners an annual commercial use fee based on the type of commercial use." This started back when the restaurant was proposed over the water. That, that particular statement is not appropriate in the Lake Structure Regulations because the fee would not really be based upon the structure. It would be based upon the use, which is a different fee that the town could impose under a different process.
Okay, and, and that, which was struck, which may be mute at this point, said, "The town shall assess."
Right.
And that means there will be one.
Mandatory, mandatory, right. That's the part, yeah, that's.
Do we need to look at that in its appropriate place? Or is this something that should be considered at a later time, which may also be a mute point because three of you have already voted?
Well, I'm recommending yes. We consider it at a different session, have to do more research, more data on, on the how and what kind of revenue it would generate, and, and what to appropriately call it, and how to fairly apply it. And that's, that would be a fee as opposed to a, a structure regulation.
And you, and you do not have a recommendation from the Lake Advisory Board concerning this?
Right, and we, we should send it to them for discussion first, back to us with a recommendation. And so I'm working on trying to get all that stuff together to send to them.
And maybe I'm nitpicking here, but what they recommended has just been altered. And should the whole thing?
No, they didn't recommend that last sentence. I did later. I recommended it as an add-on to theirs. So I'm, I'm requesting that that sentence be first.
It's called an oops.
No, they didn't recommend it. I did initially. I did initially. And that's why I'm.
Okay, we got three votes and an extension, which is a guest vote, so it's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Glad I could clear that up.
Why have you messed up to begin with?
Oh, right. Okay, item number nine, consider approval of the commercial lake structures for the Lodge on Lake Lure.
Okay, very, very simply. You've already reviewed the entire project as proposed in the General Development Plan. There exists today a commercial boathouse and some lake structures there. As part of this plan, the applicant is asking for council to approve the lake structures that are in that plan. It consists of a boathouse in conjunction with a marina, which ordinarily is, is not allowed the way that our, our regulations are written for, for residential boathouses. There are three exceptions or conditions that are outlined in this, that are contained in the plan. And basically, we're asking for council's approval of that marina and lake structures in the, in the conditions that are outlined in the General Development Plan.
Okay. I, I have some issues with this. And the issues are, it, it, the last one says, "The boathouse along with the adjacent lake deck shall be allowed to be built in conjunction with marina status." The, the official request for the marina was part of the conditional district rezoning, which the conditions and standards very clearly stated that that applied only to the upland land and not to the lake. So, so we, we somewhere along the line, I feel, have to discuss and approve the marina that they've requested. The zoning and planning board, or the Lake Advisory Board, said a cluster mooring slash marina. We need to define it one way or another. I think marina is appropriate based on Clint's testimony last week, or his statements. So we define a marina. The proposed boat slips are eight permanent slips and ten temporary. We had some discussion briefly last week and we left that hanging. I think it was the developer's stance, he did not want to reduce that further. He originally came in for, if I recall, sixteen permanent slips, and that's been reduced to eight. The ten slips, people worry about the increase in the boat traffic for those ten slips. That's going to be boats that are already on the lake that are using those slips as customers. I think we need to define the type of marina. We don't have a term for restricted versus unrestricted, but I, I guess to coin a new phrase, I would, I would approve a restricted marina, which means they have the eight permanent slips, the ten temporary, none of the other frills and thrills of a marina. They don't rent, they don't rent boats from those slips. They don't conduct tours in the lodge name from those slips. If a tour boat, if they have people that want to go on a tour and have enough, and they call and arrange for a tour boat to come pick them up, that's different. But to actually run tours from that facility would not be acceptable, in my opinion. And that's what they have generally said in their testimony, is they have no intent of doing that or renting slips. The permanent slips would be used, used by guests that would bring, and I still say, most of the folks that you, you entertain as guests or have as guests and clients, their boat's going to be way too big to fit there anywhere. So, but that's beside the point. But, so I think we need to define that, and, and we, somewhere along the line, need to approve the marina.
Well, question. Marina allows more slips per hundred feet.
That's right, they could have more.
Than the cluster mooring.
Correct.
What distinguishes the need for marina status? They're not selling gasoline, they're not doing anything that is in the definition. Maybe Clint can.
It's, it's still a commercial operation. It's owned by a commercial entity. So that's kind of the difference.
Okay, so.
So cluster mooring is not necessarily commercial, or not allowed to be, if I recall. That's right, yeah. Remember that now.
Okay. Thank you.
And we've had this discussion before, and I think restrictive would be a good way to put it for marina. And then I'd like to send this back to the Lake Advisory Board to go ahead and establish that classification officially. Because marina is too wide, wide-breasted. And what happens is as soon as you throw that word marina up there, everybody pounces, says, oh, you got gas pumps. If we have another category, and Steve, I talked about it one time before, is, is we need a term like restrictive marina. That's exactly what we're talking about now, so we just don't have the terminology.
So we restrict the marina basically to what they're asking for.
That's correct.
Right.
And define that.
Right.
So that it doesn't just balloon someday.
That's correct, exactly.
Correct. And partially it's defined already by the commercial model.
Right.
In other words, the commercial model doesn't have room right now for a tour boat. So even if he wanted one, he couldn't have one. And you also have your boats already in the commercial model. So he's already somewhat restricted down.
But we just need another classification.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
So, so my, my motion is, we approve the marina as a restricted marina. No gas sales, no commercial tour operations, no boat slip rentals. They have eight permanent slips and ten temporary. That's my motion.
All right, and spell it out. I guess Mike's writing over there.
Yeah. We don't care what he has.
We close public.
Yeah, we close, that's what we're hearing, right? No, go ahead.
I, I mean, in the interest of trying to get this right, it would be, make, make sense to hear what he has to say.
I know, I know. I'm just kidding.
We're just being honest.
I don't know, you pay attention. Just to clarify, our customers can use and rent their boats. I mean, our customers at the lodge. When you say tour boat, our people on our lodge who want to go on a tour, on a boat would be a, they can go on the boat.
For a fee?
Yeah, for a fee, correct.
As opposed to me, a general public just saying, I want to rent a boat.
Tour meeting, when I was saying, hey, come to.
But we can take our guests on a tour in one of our boats.
Yeah.
They can rent the boat.
We can operate a commercial.
Yeah, as long as you're not charging them for it.
That's what they're saying. There's going to be a fee.
But there would be a fee for the, for the, our, our customers are maybe a fee if they want to vote, if they want to use the boat, you know, if they want to get a boat or something. We don't know if we're going to.
Don't rent them. In my, in my opinion, don't rent them.
Even to the guests?
You told me last week they wouldn't be.
But to the guest of the lodge.
To the guest of the lodge. That was the distinction we made.
There might be additional room fee for use of the boat. Would that be excluded?
That's a. Yeah, yeah. What you said last week, what you said last week and what I picked up on was that the boat slips would be there for, to be available for your guest.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about.
Right.
And maybe for a fee, maybe free, it just depends. It just, just be the guest.
We may charge our guest for the use of our boat because they burn fuel.
Right.
So, they want, they want to go for six hours or something.
But not to the general public. So, it'd have to be a registered guest of the lodge.
Right.
You talk about the three boats that you, that come with it.
The eight, yes.
Not the, not the other, not, not the eight or.
The guests of the lodge came in and they wanted a boat slip. We could charge them for the boat slip, for the lead that they're there.
So, as the, as the mayor described, we've got a commercial licensing program that addresses all commercial boats on the lake. And, 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 and what we're talking about is already in existence up at Rumbling Ball Resort, where they've got, they got a dinner cruise boat for their guests. They've got a couple of boats that are for rent of guests at, at Rumbling Ball Resort. That process is separate and distinct from how many slips that they have. That process also has to get annually approved, and each of those boats and those applications have to get approved by the Marine Commission, as you just did for twenty sixteen. So, so, so really, there, there is a regulatory mechanism in place that balances all of the businesses around the lake that want to engage in some type of commercial activity. There's a limited amount, and when it fills up, it, it fills up.
Is it currently full?
They did not turn any boats away this year, any commercial applications, correct? Yep, and the model has some flexibility so that different types of boats and commercial businesses use and consume different portions of, of the lake. And if you've got more, let's say, you know, service boats that, that want to apply in a given year, you can balance the model and take some of those hours away from somebody else. But currently, they're, we haven't turned any away, but it's pretty full.
But, but it's fair to say, it's, it flexes each year depending on the, the timely applications that are made for the commercial permits.
That, that is correct. So, if the Lodge on Lake Lure wanted to, they've already got boats in that program. If they wanted to add boats to that program, they'd have to go and make that application along with everybody else.
And they might, it might be restricted too at that point in time.
And, and maybe, maybe I misunderstood last week because I, I, my intent when I was talking about the boat slips were that none of those eight permanent slips would be rented, not rented out in any way.
We're, we, we don't want to do that, but we may charge our guests, for example.
To use one of your boats?
Yes.
That's okay.
That's what we're talking about, Stephen. That's what we're talking about. We do not have an interest in public rental of those boats.
Okay.
Or a tour company out of there.
Or, or renting to someone else to put a boat in one of those slips. That's what, yeah, yeah.
We're on the same page. We may, we wanted to clarify that if you have a room at the lodge at Lake Lure and you would like to use our boat, we're probably going to charge you for that.
Oh, yeah.
So, I think, so I think it's probably helpful to make a distinction between the rental of a slip and the rental of a boat that happens to be in a slip.
And that's what I was saying, marina status, the eight slips could not be rented. I'm not talking about a boat out of it, of your boat, but the slips cannot be rented to the general public. And then the other ten slips are temporary, day use only for, for guests or clients or customers of the restaurant or what have you. Okay.
At some point, we need to write that down and all agree to it.
Well, that's.
After we figure out what we just decided.
Well, that's, that's what I said. I made the motion. There was a motion on the table to approve a marina status and a, and a restricted marina status for eight permanent boat slips and ten temporary slips that could not be rented. Slips could not be rented, no gas sales, and, and they could not run or conduct tours from those slips.
Can I, can I ask that that, that, that language that you added be added to the request for special grant to modify design standards that's in your package?
So, add that language here.
Correct.
That, that's fine with me.
Can I ask one quick question? The first, right before that, you said that the eight permanent slips can't be rented to the general public. This time you left the general public off and just said that.
Oh, picky, picky. Yeah, cannot be rented.
At all.
To the general public, to anybody. We're talking about slips. The slips cannot be rented.
Actual slip.
Period.
This might be partially in violation to the rules, but I know Gary Johnson had a hand raised. So, you're on the Lake Advisory Board. You want, care to express yourself, Gary? Yeah.
We need to make sure that they understand that when their guests come in and they bring their boat, they're going to have a weekly permit that, I'm kidding, that, that number, but that will be expected. And if they're using the boats that they have, then they're renting. If they can't pull anybody with that boat. That's just our normal regulations.
No waterskiing, you can't tow.
It's all part of the regulations already. It's just that they have to recognize, and I guess that's going to be like the give and take as we go forward. If they step out of line, we'll deal with them.
So, so my motion was to approve the marina as stated. And, and Chris suggested it be added to the special grant.
Your second.
I'll second.
Motion made by Stephen.
Was to approve the marina as I stated.
Restricted.
With the, with the additions that you stated.
And the restricted.
Right, the marina.
Yes.
Right.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 That sounds unanimous.
Then we got to go to the document in our book, which is to grant the modified design standards and, and for the lake structures they asked for.
Right.
So, now we got to go to that.
Yeah, I think that could be a simple motion to approve the request for special grant to modify design standards.
Okay. You want me to do that? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the request for special grant to modify design standards with the additions as previously stated.
I'll hear your second.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Stephen. Stephen, seconded by Bob. Do I hear any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All nay? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say.
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay, I'm having trouble, I guess. Anyway, it's unanimous and, he go by. Okay, it looks like we're at the end of the time.
I'll make a motion for adjourned.
Adjourned, second. All in favor, say aye. It's going.